Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Subcommittee. It's January 29th. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Roll call of the members. Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Jaramillo.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. There's one item on tonight's agenda for the Committee of the Whole. Brian Dakin, Senior Project Manager of Left Field, will provide an update on the Riviere High School building project.
Mr. Dakin?
Sounds good. Brian Dakin, One High Street. We don't really have a lot to present tonight. No new slides, but I know all of you have spent a lot of time, a lot of these committees have spent a lot of time coming to the conclusion of the feasibility study phase. So what I can report to the council, you've probably already heard, is the Building Committee and School Committee at this point have made motions to approve the Wonderland version of this project as the preferred option, with the existing site as a backup in the event that's not supported. So the long story short is that we are here tonight to field any questions and have a last discussion and then move towards a motion to support and move forward the Wonderland project. So I know we had time to meet with a number of you guys. Thanks for your time. And we can certainly field other questions, but I don't really have a lot of new info to go through tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dakin. So we're going to open this up to city councilors for questions. I guess who would like to go first? Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was looking over the budget that you provided to me. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Dakin. And it seems to me that the existing site is approximately, the construction at the existing site is approximately $22 million more than would be at the Wonderland site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the $40 million culvert cost at the existing site and the $29.5 million land acquisition fee at the Wonderland site are both contained in that budget. Is that correct?
The, at least the way we've presented the numbers, the $29.5 million land acquisition fee is listed in the Wonderland budget. The culvert is not, and vice versa, on the existing site. We're not listing the $29.5 on the existing site side and are listing the $40 million cost on that side.
Okay. In the culvert work, we already established that work needs to get done, whether or not we build a school there or not, correct?
Yes. And why it's carried in the existing site side is that you ultimately, for the reason of not having that project get in the way or delay the high school project, the money would need to be approved to potentially handle it, quote unquote, "now." In the event that we don't build on the existing site, yes, at some point it's going to have to be addressed, but it wouldn't have to be addressed now.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So I know that there was some soft costs, and I talked to you about that briefly before the meeting started. But what I, I guess my biggest question and concern is, on the budget that you provided for Wonderland, is there no contingency whatsoever for a possible additional land acquisition fee that may result from the pending eminent domain lawsuit?
There's none listed in the budget, correct? Yes.
So we just have a unknown cost there that's not being accounted for?
So I, this is stepping out of my lane a little bit, but my understanding that the city CFO has more or less proposed separate borrowing for the $40 million we would need to handle the culvert if we're not building there. The numbers you all have seen about the borrowing schedule still have the ability to tap into that $40 million, but from a lawsuit perspective. So it's not listed in the budget, but at least in the borrowing schedules you've all seen, it's accounted in that manner, in the borrowing schedules.
Okay. But we still, we don't know if that would be $40 million or not.
Correct.
We have no idea.
No idea.
Okay. So I just want to be clear about saying that taking that into consideration, in my opinion, until the eminent domain lawsuit is finalized, I think for me it would be irresponsible to approve for taxpayer money to be spent on that because we simply have no way of knowing how much taxpayers are going to be on the hook for. So I just want to be clear about that. The, okay, so, oh, and then I don't know if someone, is someone here from Perkins Eastman or no?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if this would be a question maybe for them. But I was looking at the build in Lowell, and I think they were involved in that build. And I understand that the Lowell High School, I understand it's a remodel in addition, so it's different build that we're proposing here. But they do accommodate 35, a little over 3,500 students as opposed to our, we would be accommodating 2,400 students approximately. Their build is approximately 622,000 square feet. Our build would be 420,000 square feet approximately. Their cost is going to be about $343 million as compared to our 510 or 522 million. So to me, because that's a bigger school, vastly bigger school, we are still paying a lot more money. So why, why is that difference? How can we, how can we make sense of that?
So I might ask Dan if Dan Colley has any input on that, but my guess, not knowing as much as Perkins Eastman about that project, is that the budgets for that were approved and moved forward a few years ago. And if you're escalating the project to today's dollars, we'd have to take whenever that project had its budget established, and we would have to more or less add debatable number, but 4% to 6% a year, which on a job of that size could escalate up, could be $7,500 million. But I'm not that familiar with that project, but as far as what I understand, it's a pretty similar building.
Okay. Because I think they just start, I don't even know if they've started construction yet, so it's not something that happened like a long, long time ago.
Thank you.
Don Gorialo. I designed that building as well.
Thanks.
622 is exactly that. Quite a bit of it is renovation. So it's existing building that's basically gutted and renovated, which comes at a substantially lower cost than new construction. They built a new gym. It was bid probably three years ago, and I don't have the exact numbers. And the five-story New Freshman Academy, it's got five phases. The five-story New Freshman Academy is Phase Two. Phase One was the new fieldhouse or large gym. And that's been complete for over a year now. So I want to say it's been under construction for three years. It's a 10-year, drawn-out, phased, occupied renovation. So it would have been at the place where we are at in this project six years ago?
Okay.
It's been a while, five years ago.
Okay.
So again, to Brian's point about escalation, it's quite a bit longer and costs have changed substantially.
And if I understand correctly, that the students were in that building actually going to school while that renovation and addition project was, they are, correct?
They currently are, yep. So it, it's very different. So we built a new gym. That, when that was finished, we tore the old gym down. Now we're building a five-story, four of which are general classrooms. And what will happen is the kids in the existing renovated piece will rotate through that new classroom. All the Freshman Academy stays down the street. And then when the project's fully complete and renovated, the Freshman Academy moves over, and they will vacate the Freshman Academy building, which is two blocks away.
Okay.
So it's very complicated. Lots of students, like you said, 3,600 students.
Okay. And there was an MSBA reimbursement for that project as well, right? Even though it was just a addition, not just, but an addition.
Oh, yes. Yep. It went through the MSBA process, just like this project, correct?
And then, I'm not sure, this is another budget question. I was just curious as to why the interior finishes for the building at the existing site is approximately $5 million more than what they would be for the Wonderland site. Does that make sense? Am I reading that right for interior finishes?
You are. And I don't immediately have an answer for that, but it's something that if we want to go through some more questions, I can get something on my phone and get a little more detail for you.
Just seemed like a lot. I didn't know what we were putting in.
No, I see the number you're talking about.
Yeah. What we were putting in the existing site that was $5 million more on the inside than the Wonderland site?
Yep.
And then the difference in the cost of foundation.
That's dramatic.
It looks like the Wonderland site is $12 million more than the foundation at the existing site. I remember hearing maybe about a year ago or so that we were going to be doing underground parking. So is that extra cost like for a slurry wall for underground parking? And is that necessary due to trying to remediate flooding?
It's, both buildings have underground parking. However, the structural engineer's design or intent for the design is a much different foundations required at Wonderland, exactly due to potential flooding, et cetera. So that added cost is mainly associated with what's called a mat slab. So the bottom level slab under that building is three to four feet thick. It's on a massive plinth of concrete, not required at the existing site. So the bulk of that delta in foundations is really a more complex, much more concrete foundation design at Wonderland as opposed to the existing site.
So is it fair to say that if we were to put this building on any other piece of land, most likely we wouldn't be looking at a $12 million cost for a foundation?
Yeah. It really, proximity to coastal flooding is really where that's coming from.
Okay. And just a couple more questions, sorry.
Sure.
The MEPA study, without that study being done, are we certain that there isn't going to be a need for hazardous waste remediation?
So we have, we have estimates based on limited testing for both sites. We have more testing done than we do at Wonderland than we do the existing site. And whichever project we move forward with, one of the first things we're going to be doing is digging a lot more holes out there. So right now, we think we've made the right assumptions on both sites. They're a little different for what's hazardous and underground. We have more testing, a little more certainty on Wonderland, slightly less testing and a little less certainty on the existing site. There's more space at Wonderland, but there's more known issues at the existing site, so. But that is a big moving forward item of getting, digging, digging a whole lot more holes.
And again, if hazardous waste was found and we needed to remediate that, we don't have any contingency put aside for that remediation cost?
We would, we would use some of the in-place budget contingencies to, to address that.
Okay. And then the ANRAD study is also not being done. Can we then be sure, can we be certain of the exact location of the position of the school on the land at Wonderland, even though those studies haven't been done?
We believe so. 100% sure. I can't necessarily say that, but as close as we can get, based on our collective experience with the MEPA process and ANRAD, we're confident that even if the interior of the old dog track is defined as a particular type of wetlands, it can be relocated on site. That is the plan. So we're as confident as we can be without being 100.0% certain that that's the final location of the building. I certainly don't see it moving fundamentally. We might have to bump it a little bit, but I don't see it suddenly jumping onto the other side of the site.
And is that, is that the same reasoning that you'd have for the designation of the fields as well? That you're pretty certain? Or could it be that, you know what? We don't have, we completely don't have one of the fields that we were expecting to have. That's not a possibility?
We don't believe so, no.
Okay. And we are in a better position now. I know that you and I talked about this privately, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the field at the existing site is deeded with the high school. So that puts us in a little bit better position in regards to Article 97 issues and things like that, right?
Yes. Our current understanding, that we have a couple of lawyers, seeing if they agree with us, is that the only piece of the existing site that's subject to Article 97 is the Ambrose Side baseball field.
Okay. And specifically vocational opportunities, do we know what exact vocational opportunities are going to be offered? And how money, how much or?
Want to try that?
So one of the pieces of work we did when we first started this process was to have work with the community to figure out what the needs were for our students going forward. And we had a community visioning session that had a couple hundred people at it. It was great. And we also worked with the, I'm going to forget the exact name of them, but the North Shore Municipal Employment Board and talked about what careers would be primary for the students, for the children of Riviere going forward. And that's what we built our educational program from. And so some of the pieces we were looking at were a biomedical pathway. We were looking at a hospitality pathway. And we were looking at an early childhood pathway and a medical services pathway. So those are all careers that we anticipate will be in demand in the area when the school is built. And those were the pathways that we're hoping to have a program where kids would come in and do an exploratory in their first year and then pick a pathway and go from there. And it would include internships in their pathway. That's what we're focused on. One of the things that we have to be aware of is state regulations around our inability to duplicate efforts from what's happening at the Northeast Folk.
Right.
So we can't have same programming that they have. So for example, they have a culinary arts program. We cannot have a culinary arts program. But we can have a hospitality program where our students can learn how to get into hotel management or function production, things of that work, as long as it doesn't duplicate the efforts of what's happening at Northeast.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Dakin, just, could you just reiterate again for me? I know that you already mentioned this. The difference that this is a school building and that has an impact on union work so that there are only two trades that would be union work on this project?
So the way almost all of these Chapter 149 ACM at-risk projects work is your construction manager, you can consider them the general contract of the law calls him a construction manager. In our case with Consigli, they're signatory to the laborers' union and carpenters' union. That means 100% of labor in carpentry will be union. The state defines 17 different categories of what are called filed sub-bids that has a very tight process. Those 17 categories don't make up all the subcontractors on the job, but they will be publicly bid. They could end up union. They could end up open shop. And outside of those 17 categories, everyone that's sort of left, we bid through the contractor. So on every project I've worked on, we end up with a mix.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. President, I have a few questions for Mr. Viskey. Can I keep going?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Viskey? Thank you for your copy. You provided me with a copy of your.
One moment, Councilor. I'm sorry. We got to do name and address for the record for everybody. Sorry.
Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway.
Hi, Mr. Viskey. You presented me with a copy of your presentation that you had on January 19th, 2023, and I just had a couple of questions regarding that presentation. First, on page two, you noted that your number-one source of funding capacity is by way of property taxes. Would you, is that still the case, considering this is a year old?
I'm sorry. Say the question again.
So you have here, how can we build financial capacity to construct a new high school? And one of your first choices is property taxes.
New growth.
Okay. Then the largest source of new growth, you listed as Suffolk Downs, right? Is that?
That's correct.
Still the case? Okay. And then on page three, for revenue opportunities, the first revenue opportunity that you listed is an exclusion from Proposition 2.5 for the purpose of raising funds for debt service costs, right? So that would still be on the ticket.
Well, just, just to be clear, the list of items, there are menu of options on how to raise revenues. So they're not necessarily in any kind of chronological order.
Okay. Fair enough. And then you had a, on page seven, I thought this was interesting. In terms of expenses, cost savings, opportunities, one of the things that you listed was to decrease the cost of construction of the Riviere High School. And you specifically said that any portion of Wonderland that can be available for private development that can ultimately create property tax revenue should be considered. This may eliminate some of the fields that were in the original plan. So is this something that's being looked at or just ignored at this point or obsolete?
They're all conceptual. None of them are being looked at. Where, what I was asked to do is to give a menu of options on how to create capacity. So that's basically a brain dump of all the different types of options the city can seek out to create capacity, whether it's through additional revenues or cost savings. So, so, so none of them are vetted out to the point where it's, it's really just conceptual. We got, you know, if this passes, we're going to have five years to kind of plan on how we're going to build the capacity. So I wanted to give everybody the options.
No, I, I understand that. I did just want to point it out because people have contacted me and they said the fields are very important. So I was surprised to see that possibility might be actually not having the field and using some of it for commercial revenue if we need it. I mean, if something happens worse to Suffolk Downs and that revenue doesn't come in, we're going to have to get more creative, right? So.
In order to create the capacity, we're going to have to look at every option, I would say. So again, not the chronological, nothing that's better than others, but it's supposed to be a list of every option that is available to the council.
And then in terms of next steps, on page 10, you specifically said, looking to have the city council vote on the updated or trimmed-down total budget of the school. Has that, is that not hap, like I haven't.
It got voted down at the last meeting that you're talking about. So that's when everything stopped.
Okay. So there hasn't been any attempts to try to trim anything down?
We're not even at that point yet.
Okay.
About a year ago, prior to us, the project moving into studying the existing site on Wonderland, there was a value engineering phase. And if, if I'm not mistaken, we value engineered somewhere in the realm of $20 to $25 million out of the project then. And, and those decisions have stuck. So we not only applied those decisions to the current version of Wonderland, but if they had a twin, so to speak, on the existing project, we took those reductions as well. So there was, there was one stab a year or so ago at value engineering. And if we were to ever think that we're violating this budget moving forward, there would certainly be more.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question for Mr. Capizzi.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Capizzi, 281 Broadway. Hey, Paul. How are you, Paul? Councilor Kelly just brought up a point. The litigation and negotiations with the former owner. Do you feel as though, we have to do that anyway, whether we put a high school there or we don't? Is that correct?
I'm going to say what I've been saying, and I don't want to sound like a broken record or a wet towel. I prefer not to discuss any matter connected to the litigation whatsoever, especially while opposing councilors sitting in this room. So I prefer we keep it, we not talk about it at all. If you want to have an executive session, it's something we can explore. But I will not comment on the litigation as we sit here today because it would not be prudent for the city to do so.
But we do, we do own it and we have the deed.
We do own it and we do have the deed, correct?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, my first few questions would be for, I think, Dr. Kelly. Thanks for coming tonight, Dr. Kelly.
Diane Kelly, 101 School Street.
Dr. Kelly, a few weeks back, we discussed the possibilities of, of busing teachers if, if we built at the existing site. I've actually had a few calls from teachers over the past few weeks speaking out more or less that they would leave. Like, what is, what is the cost to the school at the, through the time of length of hiring, looking for another teacher if we had a, a mass exodus of teachers?
The only way I could describe it is insurmountable because we're already at a, at a place right now where it's difficult to find teachers. I think along the lines of our friends in the police department, teachers have not necessarily been treated with a high regard and a lot of respect of late. And people are finding the, the job very challenging. So I think that if we had a mass exodus, we have almost 200 teachers at the high school. If we had a mass exodus, I don't know how we would fill all those positions. We've never been in a position where we needed to fill that many in one school in one year. So I, I would be very concerned about that. And I do think that teachers, I know if I was still in the classroom and I had the prospect of spending the next six years in a construction field and still trying to meet the state requirements in terms of accountability and student achievement and had to park away from where I work and take a bus to and from, and God forbid I had a family emergency, somehow I had to figure out how to get to my vehicle to go home and deal with that, all of those things would make working at Riviere High School and even Romney Marsh Academy unattractive to me as an educator. So I would, I would really, I would anticipate, I can't say for sure, but I would anticipate that there would be a lot of negative reaction to that.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. This one might be for Brian or Consigli. If we, if the high school is built at the existing site, it's confirmed that the parking is what it's down to when, when you gave it to us the other night. Mostly what was said was they'll be parking for construction workers, right?
Yes. That's what we can accommodate on Ambrose.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like my fellow councilor, I've received a number of calls regarding the busing issues. Dr. Kelly, if you wouldn't minds? Thank you. And I know this is something you've probably thought about. Could you talk a little bit about your plan for the existing site and the busing? Where would the teachers park? Would they park at other schools?
Honestly, this is going to be so ironic, but the only place in the city that I think that would accommodate, now remember, it's not just teachers. We have other staff members there. It's about 300 staff who work in that building on a daily basis, 300 to 350. And we also have our upperclassmen who typically drive to school. So I wonder with them, if they had to drive somewhere else and then take a bus to school or just take a bus from home, what that would do to student attendance? That's a concern. But having, when I think about the city and where we could possibly put several hundred more vehicles, ironically, the only place I can think of is Wonderland, which is currently, I think, a parking lot, right? I don't know where else in the city there'd be space to accommodate that many vehicles. We have larger parking lots at the West Riviere complex and at Beauchamp, but we certainly don't have several hundred spaces between the two. We have no extra spaces at the Romney Marsh. We have no extra spaces at the Paul Riviere. spaces at the Romney Marsh. We have no extra spaces at the Paul Riviere. We have no extra spaces at the Hill School, no spaces at the Garfield Complex. So it really would be a bit of a conundrum.
And you said 200 teachers, you believe?
Mm-hmm.
Was that?
Yep. And then about 100 to 150 more staff members. Uh, remember, we have cafeteria workers, custodians, secretaries, administrators, um, all of those folks.
So you're realistically talking about seven buses? Eight?
Yeah.
Fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Eight buses?
I'd say that's a good estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Ms. Kelly, um, as a teacher of 33 years, working up the high school, I know I used my car to, to, uh, put all kinds of artwork in there to grade them, to take them home. I just can't imagine teachers being bused, especially in the wintertime with all their stuff, uh, that they take home. Uh, emergencies, not having a car. Uh, I know the buses are not in the budget, uh, busing the students, busing the teachers. Uh, I know that that's not in the budget. But I just couldn't imagine being a teacher and not having my own car to go to my workplace. And I just want to say that I was always there at 7 o'clock, you know what I'm saying? So if the bus came at, uh, 7:30, you know, it wouldn't be feasible for me because I always was, I was never late and I was always there at 7 o'clock so I could keep my door open so the kids could come in and talk to me. So I just, this, it, this doesn't sit well with me, this part of it. So, um, I just wanted to say that.
And I, I would add that to the other end of the day as well. If you went to Riviere High School right now at 5:30 PM, you'll find teachers in their classroom prepping their materials for tomorrow.
Sure.
So do we run the buses from 6 AM until 6 PM or 8 PM or, I don't know. I just, I don't, I wanna-
And I know you're having difficulties finding buses and drivers now. So I can just imagine if you have to do it with students and then with teachers, it's gonna be crazy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Jaramillo.
Dr. Kelly.
Sorry.
[laughing] Sorry. Dr. Kelly, how long have you been an educator?
Uh, I have been an educator for 30, this is my 31st year, my 29th in Riviere.
Um, Dr. Kelly, um, can you tell me a little bit about what it means for a school to be accredited?
Sure. So, um, high schools and colleges, uh, are all part of our regional accreditation system. Um, ours is the NEASC. Um, and the NEASC comes out and visits high schools and colleges. We'll stick to the high schools where that's the most relevant. Um, and every 10 years, we have to reapply for accreditation. And so it was actually two cycles ago that we, um, started to hear question marks about our accreditation.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry. Sir?
And we were able to work with the accrediting agency and assure them that we are doing our due diligence as a city, not as a school department, as a city, to, um, get the high school facilities where they need to be in order for us to maintain our accreditation. Um, they expect us to have a little more progress than we did the last time that they came to visit. Um, but they still continued our accreditation, knowing that we were working diligently toward this goal. Um, a concern that I have going forward is if this project doesn't proceed, whether it's at Wonderland or the existing site, if a high school project doesn't proceed, I worry that the high school's gonna lose their accreditation. And the NEASC has told us that we will. So what does that mean? Um, college-
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, no. Um, so, so that's, I, I think got into the line of question I have here is, when is our next accreditation?
They're coming in for a site visit a year from now.
Okay.
So a year from, actually, a year from the spring, a year from March.
A year from the spring.
And then we'll have another-
So we're looking at 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll have another full accreditation report in 2030.
2030. Okay. Um, Dr. Kelly, what were the initial concerns that the NEASC flagged for the district and for the city when they first came to talk?
The biggest issue at the high school has always been the lack of science labs. Um, when the high school was built, not all students took lab science. Um, in 2012, the state changed the requirements and said that all high school, seen, all high school students in order to earn, um, a diploma with core competencies met, needed to take three years of lab science. Typically, that's biology, chemistry, and physics. But because that wasn't the case when the high school was built, those labs were not included in the building itself. At that time, in the 1970s, um, only kids who were going to college, and usually kids who are studying something in the medical field or something like that, were that invested in science.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Dr. Kelly, um, so you mentioned briefly that you were concerned that we wouldn't get accredited if we don't make a decision. From the educational standpoint, why are, why are you concerned about those things?
Because if we don't do something about the deficiencies at the high school and now add to the science lab situation the fact that the building itself is antiquated and has not kept up with the times in terms of technology and how we can educate students using technology, and then add to that the overcrowding in the building, um, we're, we're hit in a number of other areas now. So we're not meeting the standard that the NEASC expects for a high school to meet in terms of delivering education to their students.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Dr. Kelly, how long has this particular process taken to get to today's vote, if you will?
Uh, we first applied to the MSBA for their core program in 2016. We were invited into the core program in 2018, and we have been working on this particular project since then.
Okay. Dr. Kelly, uh, so in 2024, so you're telling me eight years it has taken us to get to this juncture?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and you're telling me that-
I, I will say, I think it's important to point out that the first two years, 2016 to 2018, the city and the school department had very little control over the, over the program because we were not yet admitted by MSBA. And we recognized at the time that building a new high school would not be possible for the city of Riviere without that grant from the MSBA.
Okay. So, so we're, uh, if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, you're telling me that without MS, MSBA funding, we would not be able to afford this high school? Is that right?
Yes. And I, we, we look at it now, we're looking at a, um, if we just use round numbers, roughly a $500 million project, and the MSBA is looking to give us over $200 million of that.
Sure.
Right? So if we're struggling to figure out how we're gonna pay for the city's portion, how could we possibly pay the full 500?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And so, uh, in short, eight years to get to today's point, we have the first batch of accreditation activity coming up in just over a year. Uh, and then the next batch in the next six years. If we don't take advantage of the MSBA resources today, how long do you think it would take for us to reapply and get back to this process?
It, it's a good question. And I, I can't, you know, speak for the MSBA, but I can, I know that, um, the MSBA recognizes the need in the city of Riviere. And I know that they're dedicated to making this project happen. I can tell you that there are dozens and dozens of other communities that are in the same boat. And, um, they need new high schools or new buildings as much as we do, and they need that grant money as much as we do.
Got it.
So I, that puts us in jeopardy if we don't move forward here.
So what happens to a school district when their high school isn't accredited, Dr. Kelly?
Um, so the real challenge is that when students apply to college, the colleges are notified that the school they're coming from is unaccredited, which says, this school does not provide the level of education that the NEASC recognizes as a minimum standard for high school students. And, um, some colleges and universities will visit that assessment on the student.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. What happens as it relates to recruiting and retaining good staff?
Another challenge, right? Um, because staff want to come to work in a space where they know that, um, their school has been deemed, uh, in good standing, both academically and in terms of the facilities, all of the different areas that the NEASC looks at.
And you're, is it multiple decades right now as an educator?
It is.
Um, have you seen, uh, have you seen performance in the school district deteriorate because of lack of accreditation?
In, in our district or in general?
In school districts, yeah.
In school districts at, at large. Um, I don't know that I can speak to that. I haven't paid as much attention to other districts
Sure.
... achievement and performance as I do to that in Riviere. Um, I think that our teachers at the high school are doing unbelievable work with very limited resources.
Okay. Dr. Kelly, back to the 2025 question. Um, so tell me exactly what are the direct outcomes of, of that next step in accreditation for our, for our district?
So hopefully, when we have our, our mid-year report next spring, a year from, a year from this spring, um, they're gonna see that we've made more progress on a new building one way or another. And they're gonna see that we're making adequate effort toward giving the kids the kind of facility that they deserve. Um, if we are not able to demonstrate that, we'll be in trouble.
Uh, what does that trouble entail?
They would be writing the reports saying that they're pulling our accreditation.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, Doc, um, Mr. Dagan.
Mr. Dagan, um, we just heard from Dr. Kelly that we are up for, essentially, our accreditation process starts next year. If this city council fails to get the wheels rolling on a school, a new high school, will we have enough time to get back at the table, um, to reconsider this for that time so that Dr. Kelly can bring this back to, uh, the NEASC where the timeframe is about a year?
Excuse me. So I think the first piece that I would have to say is if we, I've mentioned this to this council and the school committee and the school building committee. Um, if we aren't able to move forward with whichever version of this project, um, is going to happen basically as soon as this week, as soon as tomorrow, the schedule can't be held. And that, in effect, ripples into cost escalation. The same building, you're gonna move in a year later and you could add 20 something million dollars to it. If the whole process falls apart, and Riviere would have to reapply to the, um, funding pipeline of the MSBA. Uh, again, I'm not speaking for the MSBA, but typically a school of this size, it's gonna take four, five, six, seven years to get accepted in. And that's a cash flow thing with them. They, they're equitable across the state. And it would take another three years to get back. I'd consider it a decade is when you'd be back to this point if this project were to entirely fall apart.
So we're in 2024. We have the initial, um, accreditation proceedings happening next year with the final accreditation proceedings in 2030, which is six years from today. Am I right in hearing that we could be missing the deadline on accreditation and our schools could be in peril if we don't do this now?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess some of my questions will be for, uh, Mr. Dagan. I guess first I want to talk about timeline. We're about to ask six brand-new counselors that were, they're on the city council for 28 days to take the most important vote of their career, even if they have a 20-year career after tonight.
I think they can handle it.
I, I didn't ask you if you thought you could handle it. [applause] You know, you lost all your credibility when you, when you put up your, your sham numbers and you said simply that there were no good reasons for building at the existing site. I can think of 1.2 billion reasons to build at the existing site. But that's when you lost me. And that's why I didn't meet with the team, because the team lost its credibility when it put a one-sided presentation on, when you couldn't even be honest enough to say there was some sort of, uh, benefit to building at the existing site. So my point is, I didn't ask you if they were capable of doing it. I told you, they're gonna make the most important vote of their life, of, of their career, if they have even a 20-year career. I don't think it's fair to do that. So I want to get back to your timeline. You just made a comment that it's gonna cost another $20 million if we go another year. Well, forgive me if I don't trust your numbers, because you and your team made a $120 million mistake in the first estimate. That's how we ended up.
That's incorrect.
Uh, okay. Well, uh, correct me then.
It was, we reported, we've, we started this process about four years ago. And then the end of COVID happened, which had unprecedented impacts to construction, not Riviere construction, not school construction, construction across the board. Even if you're building a garage five years ago, probably would have been 20 or 30% less. That's a fact. It's not our opinion. And that's why the number went up. The number didn't go up because the building got bigger. The number didn't go up because anybody stuffed it full of things that aren't necessary. The number went up for the same reason every other public and private construction job went up, and it was the last two years of COVID.
All right.
You can discount that if you'd like, but it's not a sham.
I, 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 you know, I'm only gonna keep talking. If you keep clapping, it's only gonna make me talk longer. So
It's him here.
I'll be done, I'll be done quicker if you don't, you know, applaud on nonsense. The, the fact of the matter is, somebody on your team, a team of professionals, as you've told me a million times, I'm the guy that's built four, five schools here, okay? So I know a little bit about, and, and I spent 40 years in construction. So I know a little bit about construction and I can't be bullcrapped, okay? There was $120 million that was not talked about, should have been figured. I don't care that there was COVID. I don't care what there was. These professionals should not have been blindsided by $120 million. That's my point. And the only reason I made that point is because I'd like to delay this vote for a month, but your, your-
It will cost money.
You've, you've already threatened, you've already-
It's not a threat.
Yeah, you, yeah, of course it is.
It's not a threat.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, it's not a threat. It's a fact.
Well, the bottom line is, uh, uh, the fact is, you made a $120 million mistake and you're saying it's not. So
Disagree.
I, I got facts and you got facts. Uh, the bottom line is-
That's correct.
Yeah. The bottom line is, I, I don't believe that it's gonna cost another $20 million to delay this, uh, this vote a month. And what my problem is, I'm not even sure you can build on this site in Wonderland. And you, you made some iffy statements there when, uh, Counselor Kelly was asking you questions about the wetlands and, and, and so forth. And you, you said, well, I'm pretty sure and maybe, and I, I can't guarantee-
It's because I respect the process that it takes to get to the final answer. We can't go through that process without approving a project and moving it forward. No one can.
[laughing]
I'm trying to address your, your questions.
Okay.
And if-
All right. So, so you're, I'm to believe that it's gonna, it's gonna cost us $20 million if by chance we, we delayed this vote a month.
More than 20.
More than $20 million. Okay. Uh, I don't believe you, okay? And I'll say that publicly. Um, and I've got history that backs me up. Um, suppose we get to Wonderland now and things start to fall apart through the MEPA process. What, where, where, what do we do at that point?
I, I, I think we can get a school permitted on that site. I, I think fall apart isn't how I would put it. If some things don't work out the way the team thinks,
All right. That's a better, that's a way, that's a better way to put it.
But it wouldn't fall apart.
Sorry. I didn't mean fall apart.
Yeah.
I, I, I was just using that as a phrase. But I, I, I agree with your phrasing on that.
Yep.
If things go a little awry and, and, uh, you still believe that you can build a school there and
Absolutely.
There might be some other compromises that you'd have to make.
Yes.
Uh, give up a field or something to that.
Something, yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, this is, you know, for, for me, putting these things out is a, a lesson in futility. I, votes are already there. This isn't about you against me. This aga- this is, history, I believe, will prove me correct. And that's a sad thing for the taxpayers, not for Tony Zambudo. I'm not gonna be around that long. This is, this is, I'm fighting for the taxpayers here. And I feel the taxpayers are being shafted. And, and from the hundreds of people I've heard from over the last couple of weeks, the people out there feel the same way I feel. Uh, the bottom line is, this, this comes to votes here. And the votes are here to go, uh, against the taxpayer in my eyes. And, and so, yeah, I believe that. And, uh, so there's a, you know, I have a lot of questions about the Wonderland site. And, and I'm still insulted that nobody on your team could give a reason why the high school site had pros, only cons. That's, that, you lost all credibility there.
The only pro is developable land for tax revenues. We said that. We all understand it. We could debate the values. The values are very debatable.
Yeah.
But that's really the only benefit.
I, I think I underestimated the values in, in my eyes. But that's, that's neither-
Then the MEPA process should be easy.
Okay. Well, good. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't have any questions because I feel very comfortable with where we are right now. It's, I don't believe, and first of all, I want to thank Counselor Zambudo for putting those ads in the paper, because it gave everybody my phone numbers and my emails to tell me that they want this at Wonderland. Bottom line. And, and to the 125 people that emailed me, every single one of them said, "Wonderland, please." And I respond to them, "I will, and that's my plan. And I think we can do it." I don't believe that this 1.2 billion dollar number is factual. It's our dream that a negative person is bringing forth to convince people not to do it. [applause] And it, that would take 50 years for that to happen. I won't be around in 50 years. And a lot of us won't be for 50 years. Counselor Zambudo won't even be around for 50 years. He may be lucky to be around another 50 days, the way things are going on. [laughing] But I- Is that a threat? I feel very, you know, it's, it's a promise. [laughing] And, you know, and I, I don't, I don't appreciate having words put into Mr. De- you know, towards Mr. Dagan about- about this being a sham. This is not a sham. This is fact. Every single bit is fact. I've said Wonderland right from the get-go. When Brian Arigo first talked about it, I said, "This is the place to go. We can adjust the conservation, the floodplain problem. We can adjust that." Even if someone took over the property, which after 13 years they still couldn't get rid of, that that six acres or so that's involved is not going to affect, people work around stuff like that. And I'm telling you that I am for this. I want it to go to Wonderland, and I think we'll have a nice building at Wonderland. I still say it's a lot safer at Wonderland than it would be in the place that, you know, they want to put it. The recreation, we won't lose that for eight years. The kids will be able to play soccer, play baseball, and we're going to be getting another baseball field out of it. We know the energy that's involved, that's going underneath this baseball field, will kind of stop any future construction in that particular lot because of what's underneath the ground. But I feel very, very strongly that this is the place to go. It's a lot better. We'll get a lot better building, and it'll be a lot safer. It'll protect the people on East Mountain Ave and all the people around on School Street, having to put up with the dust, the construction noise, and the teachers not having to be bussed. And we were told that if we didn't bust the teachers, the contractors wouldn't come to work there, because they would have to be bussed. So it was a lose-lose situation if we went to the existing site that they're talking about. Not a good site. Very few of us that are in here today remember what that site used to be 60 years ago, 65 years ago, when it was a clay pit, and when they threw junk there, there was everything in that pit. We were lucky to get the fields there. How can we put a building when we have that unsecured footing underneath? I don't care what kind of construction you're going to put there, there's going to be a problem. Look what happened in Lynn, with Lynn Classical. They put it in a bad spot. It sank, it's cracking, and they're still having problems. Multi-million dollar repairs on a new building. I don't want that to happen at the existing site. Let's all put it, come on, councillors, I ask you, cast your vote to move the site to Wonderland tonight.
Yes. Good job, Iowa.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garino-Sowaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I completely agree with councillor Nowosowski, wholeheartedly. I have one question for Dr. Kelly, please. Good evening. I understand there was a lack of science labs you were talking about earlier. Will the Eastern County ditch be able to help the students with this?
Well, I mean, that's an added benefit of the wetlands that councillor Zambudo was mentioning. In terms of biological study, there's great opportunity for outdoor research due to that atmosphere on Wonderland. We don't have the same thing at the existing site, and even though, you know, wetlands sounds like a negative thing in terms of building, it's a great thing in terms of student understanding and learning about ecosystems and science and all of that. And that's another piece that I should have mentioned when councillor Kelly brought up the different pathways that we're hoping to have. One of them is going to be around environmental, and we're hoping to incorporate that kind of study, as well as study of the beach and coastal erosion, and all of those pieces that Revere is so rich in resources to study, that kind of thing.
And that will also help with accreditation, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I'm new to the council, I've been following this situation and all the meetings since its inception. So I've, the decision is pretty easy for me tonight. Given the existing site, having two schools in session while construction workers are showing up, in essence, having thousands of people show up at the same site every morning, the disruption to the neighborhood, although I don't represent that neighborhood, I can't in good conscience disregard the burden that would be put on that neighborhood. The loss of athletic fields, the paving over of ambrose, the city has always struggled with athletic space, and having those three fields out of commission for that period of time certainly wouldn't serve the students well. The culvert, if it is decided that that has to be repaired prior to the construction, that would probably delay the project. And then lastly, the high school, the old high school, which we hope, I guess, in a few years, to convert that to a middle school. If we tear that down, I'm sure we'll all be here scratching our heads, wanting to know where we would put a middle school, and we might be into an eminent domain situation again. The Wonderland site, I think the layout of the school is much nicer and a campus style, and I think the students would thrive there and have a better experience. I'm glad to see that the commuter rail station is in the plans, and that would go forward, and the building of the high school wouldn't negate that. And lastly, with the construction of new athletic fields, we will finally be able to add to our inventory of athletic fields, and I don't think there's any place else in the city where we would have that opportunity. So that's why I am in favor of the Wonderland site, and I will support that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Janino.
First of all, I may be new to the council, but I've watched them build every school since the Garfield. I worked in the Garfield traffic, the Parri-Vier traffic, the Whalen traffic, McKinley traffic. So I know the process pretty well. I received multiple phone calls in the last week and a half, more calls than, I've been on the phone, I could imagine, ever would be on the phone, and the majority of my phone calls I received were in favor of the Wonderland lot. Never mind the inconvenience for the neighbors, the neighborhood, the busing, the fields, but the kids. The kids right now, we have, for their sports, to lose the fields, to lose the ability to play, to be bused all over the place, it's not fair. These kids have been through COVID, their school careers have been messed up on it. They're back into routine again, and we're going to knock them back out. It's not fair for the kids, I don't think. I think the only choice we have is to put up Wonderland, give them the fields, the less interruption in their workday, and just move forward with it. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. We just received notification that the vocational school just received a large bump from the MSBA. I guess this question would be for Mr. Viskey. So they've literally almost doubled their reimbursement rate. So what does that mean for Revere's share? Do we get to keep some of this money now? Do we not pay the full price? And how much are we talking? Because we know every penny helps right now.
I just got the same notification you got today, so I haven't really had too much time to digest it, but I believe the reimbursement estimates have been updated as part of the most recent budget numbers you've received, but I'd honestly have to defer to Brian Dakin or Dr. Kelly if there's more information. We haven't received any formal communication, probably because we're not necessarily, we don't have a project funding agreement yet, so I don't think we're at the point where we'd get such a notification.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. So I think everybody at this point knows that my concern is affordability. One thing I am worried about is another cost jump. I'm not going to complain about why it went up, but I'm concerned that that could happen again. I do know that we have contingencies in place. I do know that you have escalation in mind as well. What kind of reassurance can we get at this point that we're not going to go from the $520 million, all of a sudden, $600 million?
Really, short of something the magnitude of the pandemic happening, there really shouldn't be any violent adjustments, and that's probably the wrong word, but if you look at a graph in the Consumer Cost Index or construction cost of the last 20, 30 years, it's always been a pretty steady rise. It's actually quite predictable. And really, the surprise that took place a few years ago, that nobody that works in my business or does estimating for a living had the crystal ball, was the supply chain crisis that resulted from COVID, was born out of COVID, going to become a year that things don't go up 3.5 or 4.5%. It became a year that things went up 25, 35, some things 40%. So that was unprecedented in my career. I think it was unprecedented in my lifetime as well. We don't see anything like that on the radar in our other projects, in this project, and I am confident as I can be that we can live by this budget for the duration of the project.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, the school department last budget had an $8 million surplus. Is there a way or an amount that you would think to give back to the city to help pay for the school?
So that gets a little bit tricky. The $8 million surplus, we've been carefully saving since the ESR money and the Student Opportunity Act began, because we know that we're going to hit a funding cliff. There's two years left in Student Opportunity Act after this year, and after that, we know that we're going to hit a funding cliff, that if we don't prepare for that, we are going to be looking at massive layoffs, and we're saving money to try to avoid that. But the other piece of this is that funding that we get from the state under Chapter 70 has to be spent in certain ways. It can't be spent on building construction or new school facilities. That is an obligation of the city or town where the school district is located. So the short answer is no. But we were able to, with the blessing of the State Department of Education, we were able to use some funding from our ESR accounts to pay for this second feasibility study that was just completed on the existing site, and they've also allowed us to use some of our ESR funding to help with the McKinley redesign, to hopefully open an early childhood center in that building coming down the road. That's because it was ESR money. We were able to use that, but we can't use our regular Chapter 70 net school spending dollars on those kinds of projects.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. A lot of my questions were asked by my colleagues. Thank you very much. I just want to say, and I'm going to quote something that councillor Silvestri said to me the other day, "I truly believe that this year was needed." And putting this site side by side, really digging into, you know, the reasons why we should build one place or another, it was helpful. It gave us an opportunity to hear from more people. And I do want to credit the administration, Mayor Keefe and his team. It has been much different this time. It's been much different, and we've had information available to us. I thought I was just meeting with you the other day. It was yourself, Dr. Kelly, Mr. Dakin. It's refreshing, and I just want to, again, thank you very much for that. And so that's the end of my comments for now. We have a lot of people here today. I know that a lot of people want to speak. I'm going to ask if you spoke on January 8th to maybe go to the back of the line if you wanted to say something else, to give other people an opportunity. We are now into what is supposed to be the council meeting, so we're going to adjourn this meeting at this point, and we'll give some people time for comments before we take our vote, when that comes up on the agenda, unless people would like to do it now.
Mr. President, is it appropriate at this time, we're in a committee, to come out with a recommendation from the committee to the full council?
Absolutely, councillor. I just, I wanted to make a decision on the public comment, but we are going to do a roll call.
Thank you.
From the subcommittee, absolutely. What is the will of the council? Would you like public comment now or later?
Take the vote. Just get it over with.
I want to make sure the public has an opportunity to speak before we vote.
They've all spoken before.
All right, so what we're going to do is, when the committee of the whole report comes out in the regular council meeting, at that point, we will have public comments, so please don't go anywhere. And at this point, if there's no further questions.
I'd just like to move that we make a recommendation to move the site to Wonderland, to the new high school.
Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the committee of the whole offer a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve Wonderland as the preferred schematic design inclusive of the presented budget, scope, and schedule? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
Oh, yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo?
No.
No, and council president Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the Wonderland site has received a favorable recommendation, or we report it out as such to the full city council.
At this time, the subcommittee will be adjourned. We're going to take a short recess. We'll be back for the city council meeting, at which point, when we get to this point in the agenda, everybody will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.